Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? Since you all talked yesterday, do you have anything else you want to share? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county. That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? That you might not have known yesterday and you want to share for the benefit of the county? Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than a, an account of what's going on. Because what this is is nothing more than an account of what's going on. And hopefully others will step up. 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 And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us. And before it's over, you all met somebody else that want to talk, just talk to us.
Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. Yes, I, 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 like I said, I still have friends that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. So I still communicate with a lot of men and women that work there. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. And, and I don't mind being a voice for the ones who still there and the ones that going to come along after all this. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. But um, I, I, I learned something yesterday from talking to y'all guys. Y'all gave me a lot of wisdom yesterday. 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 So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. So the day while I was at work, I was contemplating on the conversation we had. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. And one of the things that caught my attention was the news in front of the flag. Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison Right then, for everything that I ever done, every time I went to prison, every time I went to prison for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. for my acts of breaking the law, I was investigated and I was prosecuted. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. That, that, that particular scene, that morning when they came up, that was a crime scene. So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, So in my mind, after communicating with y'all yesterday, my mind, I'm thinking, why wasn't authorities notified? 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 Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, Not saying VPD didn't do their job, not saying L.A.'s County Sheriff Department didn't do their job, but they never was notified. 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 As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. As a plant manager, as a supervisor, somebody should have called the authorities first. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Because it, that could have easily got out of hand between the cultures. Easily could have got out of hand. 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 So authorities should have been called. 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 Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. Because when I get out of that, I'm a forensic type of person, I watch a lot of the real. DNA hanging right there. 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 So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news. So if you're trying to figure out who put it down, DNA is on that news.
So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, So, 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 so from what you were telling us today that we didn't get into yesterday, this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime. this news automatically generates some type of a hate crime.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
Or a crime scene. 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 Or a crime scene.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
That should be investigated. 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 That should be investigated.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough. By somebody at that company who cares about living beings enough.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, To investigate, to call 911, the police, or at least his home office of the plant, to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here. to let somebody know that something ain't right here.
That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right. That's right.
So nobody did that. 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 So nobody did that.
Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Nobody done that. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. Because that, inside that plant, your investigation ain't going to stand firm. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. She let authority done their job, handled it properly. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That supposed to be, that supposed to be in the bag, that's evidence. That, all that supposed to be 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 evidence. But it's nev- it never was taken properly. 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 They never called authority. 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 They never, nobody 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 never called authority. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. I get a call today, they just taking the flag down. Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag Authority, or the police, VPD, L.A.'s County Sheriff Department already had this tag in bag as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. as exhibit A B, whatever they want to use it for. Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating Because it had, everything that I did wrong in my time of breaking the law, I was investigating and I was prosecuting. 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 I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted. I feel the person who done this need to be investigated and prosecuted.
Now let me ask you a question. 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 Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it? Why didn't you call 911 when you saw it?
I wasn't there. 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 I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th. I, I quit that job on July the 8th.
If you was there, what you would call? 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 If you was there, what you would call?
If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day. If I was there, I would have called the police and I would probably lost my job that day.
And you said that yesterday, did you? 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 And you said that yesterday, did you?
Yeah, I would probably lost my job. 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 If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, If I was there, I would have called the police and nine times out of 10, I can thank you, I would have lost my job that day. 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 Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. Because I wouldn't have went in there and done no work. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. That, the work, the work part was over when I came in to see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. Automatically, you pose a threat to me when I see that. To me, I can't speak for anybody else. 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 But for me, you pose a threat for me. But for me, you pose a threat for me. But for me, you pose a threat for me. But for me, you pose a threat for me. But for me, you pose a threat for me. But for me, you pose a threat for me. So you wouldn't have got no tool. 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 And you can't just put all your time into a tool. And you can't just put all your time into a tool. And you can't just put all your time into a tool. And you can't just put all your time into a tool. And you can't just put all your time into a tool. And you can't just put all your time into a tool. You gotta care about the people. 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 I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. I wouldn't have put my, put my hand on them tool. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. Authorities should have been out there handling this the proper way. It was a crime scene. 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 Caution tape should have been on right there. 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 Caution tape should have been on right there.
That's a good point. 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 Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. Now, you said that you know of other people that may come forth and talk. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have. And I know you told me somewhere earlier, we don't even want to touch that, about what he may have.
Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, or are you speaking for or against?
Just to resuminate.
We're not, we're not making, all we're doing is...
I know you're not, I know you're not.
Initiating a process.
In favor of?
Yeah.
My name is Walter Hollis, I live in Cherokee Avenue, uh, I've been here before. Uh, now, uh, dealing with this new piece of property, did they have a long history? Originally, they tried to, the, the, uh, uh, the Lehman Corporation tried to get them to do this, and they, they didn't want it to be multifamily, they wanted best of it. Then they gave that three months later, and the Lehman Corporation actually put rezoning signs in their yard, which was illegal. And these people, the county zoning threw, threw everything out, the application, everything, because without letting these people know it, they tried to give rezoning. And they're, they're, and the lady never wanted them to do that. They offered to buy the property if it got rezoned. But with the Lehman, it didn't get rezoned. They never told them to rezonate. But we had problems, they had problems there. My point is, I, I would, I don't personally know, but I would imagine that when the, uh, sign up group did the same thing that the Lehman, that Lehman did, is that they told them that, that they would buy their property if it got rezoned. This is what they did to the fraternity house with George Saliba, the, the house on Pine Tree, they did it to the other fraternity house on Lake Tree, they did it to the church, the church agreed, the fraternity house did not agree, and that, that fraternity house the first one belonged to George Saliba, and he, George would not sell it to them, waiting, he went, he sold it to them straight after. And then it got rezoned. So, I've never, I've met the lady one time before, and she definitely really wanted to sell the house, uh, it has people living in it right now, the other house has people living in it. Actually, the pieces that y'all rezoned for the Doctor Brothers, they had people living in there, not getting it cut as far out. But, it concerns me when we see, we have a little page article in the paper about problems with affordable housing in Valos. These are affordable homes.
Walter, they were going that way, would this really stop any more approach?
Well, it, it, well, that stops the encroachment, but unless those people won't, but see, if they, if they say they're not going to agree to this, anybody can do whatever they want to, look at those pieces.
Well, they'll probably find out here in the process if they want, if they don't want to change, I'm sure they will go to the planning commission and speak in that regard.
Yeah, the, the...
That's, that's the purpose of why I'm trying to get a change back R T N, is just about that.
That's why I'm speaking for them. The, the only thing that, that I personally would ask you is, this is the same thing that I asked y'all when I spoke the first time, because all four pieces of this property were made in a motion by Mr. Carroll, that they would rezonate if they stuck to the stipulations which y'all got ruled out, about the salt dention, and the trees, and the parents, and being so far from the property, y'all got ruled out. But when all those were in...
Come out twenty fourteen?
I'm talking about on Pine Tree.
Well, we've got, we, we changed this, see, twenty fourteen, those houses were included in the, in the project, now they're no longer included, so we're trying to protect them.
Yes, I know that, you're trying to protect that, but when, I was here last time, if you remember, I asked about rezoning, putting, putting the zoning back on all of them, because we, you made a motion, you, you, you came in here and you approved it, only with the stipulation that they have applied the regulations you set up for restrictions. They, they didn't stop their contract, they didn't agree to do it. Everybody, this was, all of this was done for one project.
And they, they haven't stopped their, their project?
Sir, dear to you, this was done by, by Simon.
We're talking about, we're talking about rezoning. Simon is no longer in, I'm not concerned about Simon, I'm concerned about...
Well, the only reason, the only reason I'm concerned about Simon, because all of these were rezoned for Simon.
Well, now we're rezoning them back.
And, and he turned it down, which means he voided the contract with the city council, and they all really should go back to our team, but since we've done this, you talked...
It's been announced.
You talked to me about water over the bridge, I asked you about that, and you said, well, that's what road to bridge. Well, those first two lots of water over the bridge, it's one of the second two lots, because they were all done in the same motion, voted on, and approved. That's why they're all together.
Not this recent one, it was not, no, the recent one was only for the two pieces of property sitting...
Sir, I know that, but originally, when they were, when they were made to be multifamily...
Correct.
They were all done together.
Okay, back in twenty fourteen, yes, uh, even though I'm new, I'm, I'm very familiar with it.
But when I asked you, when they did that, should, should, because they refused to accept the stipulations to rezonate the property.
But that, I'm not concerned about that.
Well, I am.
Right, but, but then, you should be, you should be happy that we're trying to rezonate our team.
Well, I am, I, I understand.
Well, here's...
I, I just let you know that...
We could argue this all night, what I would suggest is, you go to the planning commission and express your opinion there, and then we will be voting on this in November, so...
I just felt that somebody would speak for it.
We'll look forward to this last time, but we understand, you, you're for it, right?
Yeah, and it, it's, uh...
We could discuss it all night, you're for rezoning, and that's what we're aiming to do.
That's what I'm on. I've, I've tried to speak for it, but we, you know, we need this stopped, you know, this, this part stopped, because it definitely will do exactly like when I just wrote it up, it does a piece across the year, and it orders, you run them down, as they sold it, and I know that this, this stops that.
Yeah, okay, that's why I'm about to make the motion.
And the only reason I'm here is, is that he said, well, somebody could take, I'd speak for it, and I thought, I'm waiting, I want you to speak for it.
Thank you.
I thought, I want you to speak it all night, I think I'm sitting with you.
Thank you. Walter, this, this is supposed to be, and you have an option, but, you know, we're repeating ourselves over and over again.
But I wanted somebody to speak for it.
And I'm concerned about speaking opposition, so...
Yeah, that's right, that's the matter, come up here and listen to me, and change all your life.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, everybody should have a board, you...
All right, is, is anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, and that depends, council, I'm honored to be of your face.
Mayor, I have to make the motion to approve the request to initiate the public hearing process for proposal to rezoning these two properties back to their original single-family residential architecture.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and second, is any further discussion? Seeing all in favor of the motion to stay, please say aye. All opposed, there is none of the motion carries. Okay, Mark, I'm Mr. Thomas, here for...
All right, thank you, Miguel. Uh, this resolution may look familiar to you, it's the second time that you've seen it, the only difference is, we're asking for a resolution, uh, through, not a resolution for the Department of Transportation's portion of contracts, made various repairs and improvements at the Valos Lions County Airport. Uh, the last meeting, you approved that resolution for FAA's participation, and this is for G, uh, GDOT's participation, uh, if you remember, through rehabilitation, taxiway M, uh, we're going wide taxi lanes on the north ramp, uh, some range improvements, uh, and then proceed with some property acquisition that's in the protection zone. Uh, so again, there's no cost to the city, we have to go through this process, completely finish all of that for the, uh, for the airport authority, and again, uh, this is for the G, GDOT proportion of those approvals and repairs, and we have to answer your questions.
We have no, we have no bonus in our, in our GDOT.
That's exactly right, uh, every, we, everything's, uh, we just administer the grants, and that's why we have to go through this resolution process.
Different options, any other questions? All right, did I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think I requested to approve this resolution as a proposal.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and second, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by same sound, motion carries. All right, the next item is the, uh, resolution in favor of the truck bypass, uh, to remove heavy trucks, through trucks outside of downtown Valos. Uh, and of course, this is just a resolution stating our support of the project, uh, there's, you know, right now, there's still a lot of, of, of set, uh, route, you know, so that'll remain to be seen, what this allows them to do is supports the fact that they're gonna be scoping, which means they're gonna be looking for, uh, weapons that'll be disturbed, and they're gonna be looking for, looting to go snakes that are a big problem out there, and turtles that will be a problem for them, so, uh, these are the things that, uh, that the scoping process, uh, involves, so, all we're doing is, is doing a resolution in support of the chambers, uh, uh, transportation committee to send off to D O two, so, uh, could I have a motion to, for that?
Mr. Mayor, just, yeah, just before we, we, we make a motion for that, um, we, we have some idea, uh, of them using St. Augustine, uh, around the hill, Harlem, but, but, which I agree with that, I have some, some concern where it comes out, on, on, for money going over to old State Bill, uh, road, and, and I know this, this is just, um, a study, a proposal that they will be doing, but I think they would, once they had something that will bring it back, and have, well, we have to be able to...
Yeah, yeah, they will, we, we'll, right now, there, there's two or three possibilities, right now, it does start at St. Augustine Road, where our, our, uh, railroad overpass will happen there, uh, at that switching hall, goes down to Hill Harlem, goes through the industrial park, takes up on Love, Love Avenue, and goes over and, and connects with that, what do you call it?
Forty-four.
It connects with, well, it kind of cuts across, that property right there, where that lake is right, kind of cuts through that and connects with Howard Road, and then it goes down Howard Road to Clay Road, and then comes back and goes north and back into eighty-four, that road. Now, there is also another, uh, option, and that's going all the way out to the ground, I think, and, and so, so there's, there's several things, and we'll get a chance to study that, so, is there, are there any other questions on that?
I, I have a, you can say we can go to study it before this gets approved.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, there's a close, right?
Listen, we, we will be, uh, you know, this thing's a ten-year, hundred-million-dollar project, and, and that'll be paid for by state and federal funds, and also our, the T-Slot's project, the overpass at St. Augustine Road will, as I understand it, when that's done, that'll pay for our local max, which is twenty million dollars, so, we'll have help from people from around, uh, the surrounding counties paying for that, and it happens in...
They, they, they're going to, uh, incorporate, uh, the overpass and all that, and they say, yeah, yeah, it's done in there.
That's right.
I have one question, if, if, I probably had something to say, a lot of, and it would just like to say you're not gonna have it, it's moving out of downtown, I thought we got something to say, we have it going through, maybe it doesn't end yet.
No, it's, this plan does not go through, or any, any residential area, it only goes through industrial sites and things like that, um, there, there is a few residences on the old ground, and, and, but other than that, that's about it, and, uh, so, and it, it was, it's some kind of angle across that property where, I think the county owns that farm now, out there, so, uh, from, from either way, uh, yes, and, and as we say, I mean, there's no set route yet, but it will not go through that thing, you know, when we first did the study, they had, uh, they had some, going down some avenue and places like that, and that wasn't gonna work, no, that, that totally isn't happening. Any other questions? All right, did I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have a recommendation to approve this request as a proposal.
Second. All right, we have a motion, and second, is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by same sound. Okay, uh, Pat, you got the next item.
Okay, this next item is conservation request for funding for street repairs up Pebblewood Drive and West Street. If you recall back in December, we brought before, City Council, we came up with a list of thirteen of the most degraded street locations in the city, these were areas where we were getting a lot of palsy, on potholes, that type of thing, there was literally no asphalt for us to be able to, to go in and make repairs, so in January and February, we put it out in the bid, and then March seventh, uh, you all approved the contract with, uh, rings and signs, the amount of two hundred and one thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and ninety cents, so we went along our merry way, and, uh, we started doing all those repairs. Well, subsequent to that, uh, approval, um, I was contacted by the mayor and, and, uh, Tim Carroll about a place over Pebblewood Drive, I've included photographs in, 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 uh, pack there, and, um, the road has literally been torn up, and we just couldn't leave it that way, so, thinking I'd use the ten percent contingency, we went ahead and, uh, you can see it here in these pictures, we went ahead and we got that road repaired, that, by the way, that house right there is right up for sale, and they had that out in front of their house, but anyway, we got it repaired. And then later on, uh, Mr. Vickers came to me and said, Pat, we really need to do something over West Street with this, uh, whatever, I agreed with him, it was falling apart over West Street, uh, there were several locations at the intersection of River Street in West and, and down under the railroad where it is, where Pete Street is, a little triangular area there, and again, that was it, absolutely falling apart. So, we went ahead and we, we got those, those sections, uh, finished, um, I got my final, uh, bills in, payment requests from rings and signs, and it turns out that we exceeded the original approval by six thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and seven cents, and so tonight I'm coming for you to ask you all to approve an increase in the contract arrangement sign from two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety cents to two hundred and eight thousand, one forty-two hundred and seven, that will cover the cost of the street repairs on Pebblewood Drive and West Street. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Questions, count.
Can we see, can we see what we're saying?
Say what?
I just want you to see the amount that we were paying, ring and sign, we were showing, we haven't seen that yet.
What's that, the, the amount of money?
I know what you're paying, I mean, look...
Yeah, the amount is six thousand, it's in the write-off, it's six thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and seven cents for sure.
Not, they're published, they're due to see, and that's what I was saying.
Okay, all right, so, there it is, right there, sixty-nine, forty-three oh seven is the additional amount, so, it, it goes from two oh one to two oh eight.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, uh, me and you, getting that department to find, uh, both those, uh, roads, and that, really, that double, and we have a contract already working on other things, yes, including, and I'd like to meet with your leadership on that, and I think the motion, if we approve it, we is in, see?
Exactly. All right, we have a motion, and second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, there is none of the motion carries. Okay, ladies and ladies and gentlemen, this is a portion of our agenda where citizens can be heard, so that this time I'll ask all the citizens to be heard.
Yes, sir. George Foster Rhimes, Oak Drive, Valos, Georgia. Mr. Mayor, since you quit me off at the last meeting, and the council, but you left this on my mind that you all had done an investigation about the noose at, uh, Bath Prep, that the FBI agent, I know his name, that Tom Park, a council person, and Chief of Police did an investigation, this is a copy of Chief Police report, and, uh, I went to the FBI, and I'm gonna request that under Freedom Information Act, no way this report does mention a noose of anything, they talk about it later afterward. I have signed affidavit, I got it from the bar back here, where they said it was a noose, this man or this woman put their signature on it. The Valos Daily Times made a statement, but they didn't put nothing about what I said at the meeting, because something strange happened in Valos, we wanna keep the people in, the Times did only share truth-oriented news stories, as it's on social media, Mr. Novaya, Mayor, Council, and people in this meeting here tonight, if there had not been a social media that published this noose on Facebook, and if I'd have worried in wake hours, had not called me, this would not be my third time standing for you all, so we should say thank God for social media. Now, the Chief of Police quoted Mr. Chris, or manager out there, saying that, all the people was happy, nobody saw any problem with the noose or extension or that they are funded CNN, that's what Mr. Boy says, and a lot more, I wish the people of Valos to read this, I was given an email with twenty-six black people, who said they was offended by that, the people that I interviewed, say they, they better could stop you from, from being, being violent, we know people are being shot across the nation, you all say you're taking it serious, I say to you, this is my last breath, this is my last address for you all, concerning this now, I'm gonna leave this with you all, the black people at Bath Prep were not happy about that noose, and it was not an extension call, and it didn't fall from the ceiling, I have, I have more information I told y'all about, and y'all have done a good investigation, you would have information that I have.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sick of it.
Is anybody else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak? Anybody else who would like to come, come forward and state your name, please?
Uh, Eddie Julie, drive out of Coming Street, I just have, uh, plenty, at this, uh, traffic light, they're on, uh, forest, E T eleven, couple of, uh, at the traffic light, they have, uh, a couple houses down there, big, uh, yeah, building, yeah, they got the, probably like, uh, five percent there, so once you stop this, that traffic light, you can't see the own coming, car, you know, and we've almost had, I almost got hit there, and I see other people almost got hit, and there's something to be done, those, uh, five percent need to come back, because they, they blocking a few of the drivers that coming out of forest onto E eleven, and, uh, something needs to be done for, uh, for this.
So, those two houses are blocking the view from which way?
Uh, from E T eleven, they come, come from west going to east, and, uh, they got that five percent there, I, I, all the way up to the, uh, walkway, and, uh, that's the only time I ever seen a five percent white center in front of, in that, and, and soon it's gonna, it's gonna cause some serious accident, and something will be done by, by this thing, this traffic, this stupid, yeah, this truck, like that yellow house, everyone throwing up bars and, yeah, it's a fence there, they just built that mansion.
They just put it up, they did, I saw it on my way to Council, yeah.
It's open, open deep, uh, I, I'm only high up there, you can't see through it.
What you're talking about, coming down, waiting for one east, going north.
Going east, and that's, you know, you get ready, make a turn, expect it, the light red, and you can't see what's coming, somebody gonna run into each other, that one.
Matt, would you, uh, be, would you look into that? Any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, I'm John Roberts, thirty-seven cent, in Surfer Lake Park, uh, I'm here tonight to talk about a visit I had with the city manager and with his friends, uh, he would create a lovely thing, and a motivation tiny to development on the south side, I believe that if the city house from here behind, the idea of that construction, that was developed, is helping run in the most positive way, you do need development on that side of the city, no question, I understood that there's an issue with the cleanup issues, I believe that to your best, but as long as you have a primary restricted area, and you don't have, uh, economic endowment, because there's no money on the south side, there's nothing on the south side, if all you do, this probably is restricted area, but if you get some development going on there, that brings, brings in jobs, and brings in opportunity, and we need the council to support, the idea of that expression, especially for the money, for the re-renovation on the south side, on the, on the right-hand side of the bridge, you have the south, on those, the buildings down there, and other areas down in Rockland, K four, it could be something that can be witnessed from the sky, you see something that can be done, and once we see something being done on the positive side, that means that we can do progress here in the city, it's no more than fair that we have some development on that side, and I believe a great positive meeting that we had, and we need you guys to be behind the idea of the development on that side, we talked about appropriation of allocated funds for the south side only, I know that might not be very favorable, might not sign as just a file, but we do need some development over there, and put that on the side, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Please come forward, state your name.
I'm Phil Hubbard, twenty-eleven Woody Circle, I manage a fleet of trucks, I'm just making comments about the proposed truck route, I manage a fleet of trucks, I've also driven, and I'm very much in favor of a truck route, I just hope we make a sound choice in doing that, some of these proposals are involving, um, industrial boulevard connection, and running over St. Augustine, et cetera, that would fly over the railroad track, I think would create a traffic problem there, St. Augustine and eighty-four on that side, there's also proposals somehow connect Tucker Road, come through Lloyd Jackson, it'll fly over the interstate and connect eighty-four out west into Rocky Ford, and there's some validity to some of that, in my opinion, a more logical approach would be to incorporate the existing perimeter road, and somehow go on the west end of the airport, and perhaps parallel the interstate, cross over the interstate at a point somewhere north, exit thirteen and connect the Rocky Ford Road, um, be very little, would probably be as much problem requiring a right-of-way, because a lot, some of this land's already for sale, but I think you create a route that was easy, would be fifty-five mile an hour road, that trucks and, uh, automobiles would voluntarily use this route, um, with the twisting and turning and so forth that would be involved using Clay Road, and some of this, I think, would be prohibited, and it almost have to force people to use that, I think it would be more likely to rain toward it, smooth, flowing, uh, limited access highway, such as the perimeter road currently is, problem is, is the airport, how it ties in out there with E T eleven, that is a problem, I just hope we make a good logical choice.
Well, all those things are gonna be considered, and one, one of the things that, uh, they told us they would consider was distance, because the longer it gets, the less the truckers like to use it, so, I don't know.
That's correct, but it's not that much difference, they always gonna use a limited access highway as much as possible, it, it don't affect me, because we have great access to the interstate, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard?
Kevin Bussman, three-four-seven-three, Maximil, Drive... I think that should be enough. Mayor City Council, I stand for you today to talk about the issue that I believe is still fresh in minds, and maybe some of the people in the audience that may know about this issue. Uh, but it's just nothing more than a proposal that I wanna give to you guys to take a look at, to hopefully that we can mandate this, this, uh, mandate this and make it a ordinance. Uh, during the early morning, uh, during the early morning hours of June twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, Desi on the Hill was fatally shot outside a team party being held at the multi-purpose building in Valdosta, Georgia. There was no adult shot on at this party, no security inside, no, uh, on-site police officers outside. There weren't any security measures in place to ensure the safety of the children inside or outside of this establishment. This proposal initiative will show, uh, the community that the local government and the city of Valdosta is serious about protecting the citizens by ensuring accountability across the board. In the same manner that we will hold the property who convinced the act, we must also hold the private commercial properties and management entities to the same standard. I call this the Desi Act, and it's a proactive approach to preventing tragedies like this from reoccurring in the future. If you rent a club venue, i.e. whether it's a Patterson Downtown, or Deja Vu, or the nightclub, uh, you're mandated to have a police and security, have police and security if there's a potential of a large crowd. If you rent a facility from the BLB, you must have police security and as well as a multi-million dollar liability insurance policy. These mandated policies are in place to ensure that the security and the safety of anyone who may attend. With the, uh, with the support of the family of Desi and Hill, we the people are advocating for a policy in her honor. This is a mission that will mandate that all property owners, property management, and contractual agreements ensure the adequate security and or police enforcement are present at the property if there are, if there are to be a large amount of people expected. Property managers and property owners should be knowledgeable of the type of event taking place at this building, and in the event that the large crowd, police, and security must be mandated in all contractual agreements. It is the property manager's responsibility to make sure these were crime events are, are met, I'm sorry, and in case that someone is injured because of the lack of security and safety measures, it is the property manager and property owner that should also be held accountable. This policy will help to prevent and deter the same type of tragedies from occurring again in our community, mandating crime events and the real agreements will not only protect the citizens, but also the property owners of the building. This is nothing more than just, uh, a way to be proactive and push them together.
Thank you, sir. Any other citizens to be heard?
I'm gonna stand over here for my three minutes to say thank you all for taking care of the ditch at my business. I really appreciate it. Good evening, my name is Alwyn Williams. I have these shades on because my glasses are hiding in my house somewhere. I live at twenty-six oh nine Royal Road, and I'm here today, first of all, to applaud this blessing that he has coming forward. However, as a mother, as a business owner, as a widow, I understand loss, and I understand the love of the parent. And I also understand the guy, the, the stresses that are put on the city and business owners. So I come to you today to say that there is someone in Valdosta who knows what happened on that night when Mrs. Hill, when Mrs. Hill. And I think, I would like to see the city and this community come together as a whole and put a reward together that would entice some of those individuals that will either are part of it or no other to come forth. I think that we have to become more proactive. Uh, I know that our police force is limited in its resources, in its manpower, and it's stretched to its limits. That is no excuse, I'm not giving that as excuse. I'm simply here today to say as a community and as the city of Valdosta, let's put some money where our mouths are, and let's find out what happened here. Let us be the city that comes together as one, and when we come together as one, we make a difference as one. And say to those people who want to reside in our civil, our city as, and not be civil, that we have something for you. We're going to catch you, we're gonna put you away, and it's not going to happen again. To that family, I've lost a loved one, and it seems as if it was yesterday that I lost him. So I can't tell how they feel, but I know how I feel. And I don't have to be forced to bring him back. But I think as a city, this is not just the Hill's problem, it's all of our families, and we all need to come together to assist this family and others who have lost other loved ones in similar situations. So I'm going to encourage you to put a reward together, and if it takes putting citizens to get involved in it, let's do that and call out these people who don't want to be in our wonderful city in a civilized manner. Thank you.
Thanks, sweetie. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Nightyard Airbuds, okay, come forward.
All right, a few items tonight. Uh, she can tell you at the building, all right, that it's Food Truck Thursday in downtown Valdosta, a lot of people are arriving, and that will take place at late thirty this evening, so if everybody exits the meeting, please go, uh, grab some food at the Food Truck event. Uh, both our Valdosta Police Department and Fire Department have two coffee with chiefs coming up. Uh, the first one is on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, from seven to nine-thirty. This will be downtown Jesse's. The next one will be held, uh, Wednesday, October second, from nine to eleven, uh, at McDonald's on Ashley Street. Uh, so spread the word, these have really been popular, uh, they really gained popularity since we began these. Good news tonight, the Georgia Theater Company, uh, has once again chosen to graciously support Valdosta Police Department and the Shallow Cop Program. Uh, it's the sixteenth annual Seminole Four Call event, and they've chosen our Shallow, the Shallow Cop Program, uh, to donate to. So on September twenty-ninth, we need everybody to go to the movie, uh, because a hundred percent of all proceeds from ticket sales, concession sales, will go into this, uh, to these charities, and again, that's been one of those, September twenty-ninth, go to the movie and help. Because if you haven't, if you haven't seen the participation with, with Shallow Cop, it is wonderful, and, uh, this is a great way for us to even get more boys for, for these children for Christmas, so. Uh, I also wanna remind everybody that beginning Monday, September twenty-third, Southland Contract will begin, uh, the construction of the sidewalk at, uh, sidewalk curved and transpired on the east side of Walmart Avenue, and this will be from Walmart to Old State Boulevard. So that will finally begin, let me counsel them.
Good.
All right, that's...
Just repeat that date for McDonald's on Ashley, because we...
McDonald's on Ashley will be, uh, nine to eleven, October second.
And that's interview. Any council comments? Yes, sir.
I'd like to encourage everyone to come out to, uh, September the thirty, it's on Monday, six-thirty to eight, Council gives District Six, we're gonna have a joint, um, town hall. We'll be able to answer a lot of the questions that you may have concerning some of the issues you've been hearing throughout the campaign. I'd like to continue to encourage our police department, our fire department, you guys have been doing a lot of the job, doing hard work, I would depart their heads and everyone throughout the city. Campaign be over soon, so y'all keep your heads up, and we're gonna just continue to break y'all, continue to do the job, so...
Wait, wait until the event, you know, say...
City citizens, send on Park Avenue, six-thirty to eight.
Any other, any council comments?
I think I want to make one to comment here. First of all, y'all, just till it's right up, pick out a department, some of the wonderful work that I know is probably doing, uh, living up the streets, keeping the city clean. Uh, also, uh, that's her, she had a meeting, but we're trying to get information out to our people about questions she asked for about housing, we also had meetings about car, and things more in the community. We're asking the people to get involved, so that they can, or they wanna know about it, to get involved. We're asking that they attend the meeting. I also wanna say this, that as a member of this council, a lot of us have compassion, and there's a lot of things be going on, but if you think that the council is not caring or compassionate about what goes on and happened to the people, especially they're talking about, like, people getting shot, and, and, and not responding, and something happened to our people in the city that, you know, we gotta need to know everything that's not true. Our council does care a lot of us, right? And that's what putting up a, a war or something, who would love to, but you better believe it, it gotta come from the citizens, because all that money you're saying, we got to get money to put out a war or somebody, everybody that gets shot would have to have their private support. So what I'm saying, the county, I mean, the city supports one, we gotta support the all. So where we gonna get the money? We're gonna get the funds from the citizens. So as individual citizens of Valdosta, it's not a problem. When you just start a fund, when you just come forth with it as well, and do that. And from, you know, that, the, the council members, I'm not, I will speak for myself, we are not good enough compassionate about it. We care, we do. We may not say something about everything we do, but we do. And, or as we're saying, start a fund to support a war, to yield, to help the people. Where we gonna get the money from, y'all? We gotta get it from y'all. You think we already getting that money coming? Then, so all I'm saying is consider what you're saying and what you're asking for, and please be careful what you're saying, because, uh, I, I feel like, I know I care, and I feel like all the councilmen's care about what's going on with people in our city. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to add just something there to what the council just said, that we may not say anything in public, but we talk one, several, and managing about what be going, what's going on, so. We try, we try to be, we want to rule us, and we can hear, saying that, we have a motion to...
Wait, 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 wait.
I can't accept that question, Robert.
I just wanna say, yeah, yeah, thank you for this, one second. Uh, to piggyback off what those two just said, in nineteen ninety-three, a young man killed my own daughter. One side of her face I knew, one side of her face I did not know. So every time a kid get hurt here, I feel it. I might not say nothing, but I feel it, and I continue to serve. And if anybody, a mother that lost their only child, and one side of your face you know it, and one side you don't know, I lived it deadly, but I keep serving to reach each child, and we can stop that in our area. I hurt when they hurt, when they bleed, I bleed, when they cry, I cry, but I still stand. My boys almost lost when they still. I have to be a daughter, I have to be mom, I have to be sister, but I still serve the city of Valdosta. So if you have not walked in those shoes, don't talk about this. And again, it changes subject, we're here before I cry. Twenty nineteen leadership lounge is in, we get the house today, and we have one here, raise your hand, that's applause. Twenty nineteen, the best leadership class ever. And we love, we serve that. V S U on the swim team, I can't swim, but he tells me how to build a capsule. So that's the part of my great job, and that's it, uh, and he wanna pitch with us in. Thank you.
All right, any other comments, sir? No way. I haven't been allowed to speak. I wanted to report to y'all, I was gone for three days this week. I was at the Air Force Association Convention, Cyber and Space Convention in Washington, DC, where there was an award made, it was called Parker Green Memorial Award, and of all the awards that were given, this was the only one where there was a, uh, a video, a fifteen-minute video, and it highlighted what goes on in Valdosta. I was so proud, I couldn't, and of course, it was given to Parker's wife, and I was there to support her and, uh, and to represent the city of Valdosta. So I'm hoping to get, I'm hoping if I get asked to help to bring that up on, on the website, and we'll present it to the Valdosta Times where you can, from a article on it, but it was a very meaningful service. Uh, the other thing is, we have a grand opening at the Recall Trampoline store tonight, so any of y'all that, it's going on right now, so if, if there's any of y'all that would like to, uh, go jump on the trampoline, I'm sure...
For Timmy, you're gonna be...
I'm sure they, I'm, I'm not, but I'm sure they have to let me alive know the insurance. Now, the other thing is, uh, if there's nothing else from the council, we need to have a short executive session, I need to report to y'all on a couple things, so. Could I have a motion to move Garrett? On litigation, I'm sorry. It's, it's on litigation, so, uh, I'm sorry, y'all, we will reconvene and, uh, and... There we are.